Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone tonight. I'd ask that you would please rise as Eric Lulu leads us into our indication followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you even on this snowy April day. It's a reminder that you are the God who is in charge of the seasons. We thank you for all that you take care of and we thank you for this beautiful city that you have given us and we pray that we would do our part to take good care of it. We pray in this meeting for a spirit of peace and unity that you would guide us with your wisdom into the decisions that you want to be made here. I thank you for all the servants here. Pray for your blessings on them as they continue to serve. May they serve well. God, and we pray that whatever happens here at this meeting would be for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Now, please join me in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:33, April 2, 2018, and I will call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item of business tonight is the approval of the agenda and I will ask City Administrator Andrew Bremse if there are any changes, but I would request that we move the open forum later in the agenda so we can talk about our issue on the RTC before we move it up to the open forum. So if that's agreeable, everyone will move item G until after item K. And Andrew, do we have one addition to the open forum request as well?
Yes, Your Honor. Members of the council, Ziola Holm is also going to be speaking under the open forum regarding the RTC and there is a packet of information related to her request on your desks tonight.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All for Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Rod. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening and there are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we will call on Guy Taylor, Public Works Director, to give us wastewater treatment plant award.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll call on Matt Lemke to join me here. Just want to recognize the wastewater treatment plant staff on a recent award that they received at the annual wastewater operators conference held down in the Twin Cities last month. Just congratulations and thanks to our staff Neil Sletton, Stefan Nelson, and their supervisor, Matt Lemke, for their work in achieving compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System and the state disposal system requirements. These staff members have not only achieved compliance, they continually are constantly evaluating ways to improve and make more efficient the processes at the treatment plant. They are maintaining, repairing, and upgrading a 37-year-old facility, ensuring that it will be a facility that will hopefully be viable for decades to come. So thank you, Matt, and you've seen this before, but the state awarded this certificate of commendation to the operators at the plant and just encourage any of you, if you want to stop out and visit, I'd be glad to chat with you. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
The next item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring April 2018 as 30 Days of Bikining Month and I will say, whereas 30 Days of Bikining was founded in Minneapolis in 2010 and whereas 30 Days of Bikining works to promote individuals to bicycle, share their stories, change the way bicycling is seen in their community, and whereas it's snowing outside... Whereas 30 Days of Bikining works to make bicycling accessible to all people and contributes to Fergus Falls' growing reputation as a bicycle-friendly community, now therefore I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim April 2018 to be 30 Days of Bikining Month in the City of Fergus Falls. Thank you to the Bike Ped Committee as well as Pedal Fergus Falls for their efforts to promote biking in our community. Thank you. We have one more proclamation and we have our library director, Aaron Smith, with us this evening and this proclamation is declaring April 8 through the 12th as National Library Week. And I will say this, whereas libraries are not just about what we have... What they have for people, but what they do for people and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted, treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities. Whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do proclaim National Library Week, April 8th to 14th, 2018, in the City of Fergus Falls. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you to everyone at the library. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet and there's also a copy on the board. If there's anyone who wants to pull any of the items for individual discussion, we can entertain that at this point. If not, I would look for a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Tom.
Thank you, Rod.
Second up.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
We got it. Resolution is approved.
He was trying to be Rod there for a second.
Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $489,246.75 and if you have any questions, I would direct those to our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore. If not, I think Scott, thank you. Tom?
I have a question.
Second? Yes.
Bill, I just noticed that on the cellphones, obviously Sprint is like 270 bucks for the Convention and Business Bureau Center, whereas the rest of the city is like 1.4, 1,400 bucks and most bills are for kind of anywhere between 50 and 60 bucks. I know that conventionism is very our jurisdiction, but should they not look to join our plan or something?
If we're paying the bill. I mean, why don't we physically pay it, but it just seems something to maybe to look at.
I'll just review that with our director and see what... It could be something new, like maybe there was a phone replacement on this one or something that wasn't abhorrent or something. So we'll...
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we have a resolution and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Department Reports, first item is a Legislative Committee Recommendation for Modifying Bonding Request for the Regional Treatment Staff and I'll call on our City Administrator, Andrew Bremse.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of the Council. I will try to speak up tonight. I'm feeling a little under the weather, so just holler at me if I'm not being loud enough, please. Since the last meeting where the council gave the direction to the Legislative Committee to look at the bonding request in light of the developer that came forward, we've done quite a few things, including meeting with legislators again at the State Capitol, having the State Historic Preservation Office staff up here on-site last week touring the facility with us, and we've also had further discussions with the development group over the last couple of weeks. And the map on the screen kind of shows the direction in which the Legislative Committee is looking to modify the request. The buildings in blue are all either a part of the current development group that we're in a letter of intent with or have individuals that have expressed great interest and we feel those buildings are going to be redeveloped with no other action from the city. The buildings in red, which are the buildings that are not a part of the horseshoe the city feels or the Legislative Committee feels like we need to continue to seek funding for demolition of those buildings in this legislative request. And then there's discussions about to what level of mothballing do we want to do on the buildings that are highlighted in green and those discussions are ongoing. I don't have a dollar amount exactly for you tonight. Part of our bonding request under this scenario is also going to include cash and that is cash for holding costs, so if we are to continue to carry the horseshoe like presented on the screen, we would have some protection from our local taxpayers to not have to foot the bill for the holding costs for the next several years. With that being said, I envision that the cost is going to land somewhere between $4 and $5 million based on the map that you're looking at here and the Legislative Committee will continue to work through defining that specific dollar amount, but the intention of the legislative request would be to seek demolition of the buildings that are behind the horseshoe and the thought being that there's still... Well, I'll let the mayor speak to the rest. I'll stop there.
No, keep going.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say this and I think we could open up to discussion and comments from the council. I know Tom and Justin both might have some things to say. I'll just say this, I think it's a compromise. I think it's a compromise that allows the city to continue moving forward on reducing the footprint of that campus to a scope that's manageable while still preserving the most historic components of the campus. It allows us to present a request to the legislature that I think can be successful. I hope it's a request that the people who support preserving this building will get behind. Those who have contacted legislators, I hope that they will contact those same legislators and say, "This is something we can achieve as a community." And I think it creates a clear path forward for the current developer to achieve the historic tax credits they need for that development to go forward. So I believe from the things I've heard from the community, from the things I've heard from the council, this is something that we can get done. It's still, it's going to reduce the footprint of the campus by close to 30% on some of the, what I believe are some of the non-contributing portions of the building. It allows us to move forward and allows us to get something done and I'm hoping that it's something that as a community we can get behind. Justin?
You know, just to echo that and what the city administrator said, I think, you know, on the Legislative Committee, I learned a lot in the last couple of weeks downstate Capitol, working with our representatives, doing what's... Talking with SHPO and having an onsite visit. I think we've come a long way with the folks we've talked with as far as a clear path and I think it's something that, you know, they're getting behind and it's something that, as the mayor mentioned, I think it's something that is achievable, which allows us to move forward in a clear path to not jeopardize our taxpayers, to get some cash for funding for future expenses up there, but also just kind of, like I said, a clear path forward. And I hope with the divide we've had on this issue, you know, in the social media, I mean, there's obviously a lot of passionate people with this facility, which, you know, I had the opportunity to make it to the rally up at the RTC or at the, excuse me, the Government Center. And I don't remember the, who brought it up, but part of the discussion was kind of drawing a line in the sand and something that, what they would be willing to work with but versus what they wouldn't be. And I can't speak for the group, but they had brought up the mention of, you know, keeping the horseshoe intact and some of these non-contributing buildings that, like I said, I think if, working with SHPO and working through that process, if we can have them get behind this project, I'd like to hope that the folks in town that are passionate with this would get behind with the city to kind of compromise and start on this plan and this phased approach with our current ask or change to our current ask. So I think it's a long way from where we were at necessarily and, you know, hopefully we can work together on this.
Thanks, Justin.
And thanks. To touch on what the mayor said about compromise, I think that this plan really is a good chance for compromise. I've heard from both sides of the issue, you know, both as I've stated before, knocking doors in my ward, hearing from a almost total majority of people that want to tear the building down, including once at work today in the hallway, someone stopped me and gave me their unsolicited opinion, said, "Tear it down." But I am interested in compromise. I'm also interested in what I think is going to be our best chance at the legislature for getting this money because as far as what I'm concerned, this bill that we're asking for in the legislature serves to protect the taxpayers of Fergus Falls. And so my message would be if you want to see the building, the campus preserved, I would highly recommend and ask you to reach out to your legislators and the members of the Bonding Committee, as well as I'd like to just tell the people of Fergus Falls, if you don't want to see this building and this project result in a property tax increase, there was a list that was published in the paper on Saturday of the members of the Bonding Committee. I highly encourage you to reach out to them, encourage them to vote yes on our bill and because I think that this is a good compromise for both sides. And again, to reiterate what Andrew said, part of our ask would be cash for holding costs so that the city's not on the hook, you know, while we figure out what to do with that green portion there, not on the hook for those expenses. So it's a good chance for compromise and I look forward to working with all the parties involved.
Thanks, Tom. Anthony?
And one thing I'd like to add, that if people are contacting the legislators, they also equally need to put pressure on, for legislators to put pressure on SHPO because ultimately, none of this will happen unless SHPO agrees to stem alone tax credits on individual buildings. You know, if they link tax credits to be in the entire building, which is what they've done historically, then developers will go away. So I think, you know, any effort of contacting a legislator will also say, you know, tell them that we need help with SHPO.
Thanks.
Go ahead, respond to that question. And that's the reason, Councilmember Hicks, that we had SHPO here last week and just so everybody's aware of the process, the developer for the east and west attached buildings needs historic tax credits to be successful with that project and to get the historic tax credits, you need to be a national-registered property. And right now, the entire campus is registered as one. And so the city has engaged an architectural historian from the Twin Cities to make the case as to why these buildings that are highlighted in red on the screen could be removed from the campus yet maintain the campus status on the national registry, thus providing a path to those tax credits for the east and west developers. So in the next couple of weeks, the architectural historian will provide a report to the State Historic Preservation Office indicating why this is feasible and why this should be the way it is. And then the State Historic Preservation Office forwards the report on to the National Park Service, which is the Department of the Interior at the federal government level, who makes the ultimate decision based on what that report says and if this property is still eligible for the national registry status. And as Councilmember Hicks alluded to, the SHPO is an important piece in that because they will determine how fast things move forward. The developer has deadlines that we have to meet in terms of various tax credit applications and so time is of the essence and the State Historic Preservation Office has given us the assurances over the last couple of weeks that they will make this a priority of their office and will move things along. So the process has been defined, the process is underway, and now we need all the pieces to come together.
I would just add one thing. I know that, having been involved in this issue for quite some time, I know there's been contentious relationships between the city and SHPO and between... SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office wants to get this done. They want to work with us, they want to find a way to preserve it. I truly believe that they want to work with us and I'm very, very positive in the conversations that we've had with them concerning this. I would just say I'm very confident that we can get this done, but it's going to take all of us to be successful. Anyone else have anything that they would like to add?
I just think the words, you know, we haven't never talked, you know, we got brutal mothballing about six months ago or eight months ago, we didn't talk about it. Now, all of a sudden, now we're talking about it again and we asked for money from them to help mothball and then down the road in two years again to, if this, the worst case scenario, if everything falls apart, what we just spent, you know, how many, we're going to spend a million mothballing or what are we going to spend? It's a tough... I don't like that path of mothballing.
Yeah, you know, we can use the term asset preservation mothball, but to your point, though, the council will have that decision before any work is done. The current language that's in our bill for the 8.9, even that included language that would allow us... So the language is the language that's in the bill. We get, when we get the money, we will be able to decide what we do with it.
Soon as we start talking about, tomorrow, the phones are going to ring about how much moth... What do you guys do in mothballing? Again, it's just going to, you guys know that that's going to happen. So that's where I'm at with this and I just want to use that. I don't want to do any mothballing. We're going to demo, I mean, I like the first, the second stage, but the third stage shouldn't be put aside, you know? And stage four is the people that, the east and west attached.
Your Honor, that, Councilmember Rachel, that's really the point that the Legislative Committee is mauling over and I think that's why I'm telling you tonight that the range is going to be somewhere between $4 million and $5 million and that's based on the depth of asset preservation mothballing, whatever term you want to use, that's put into the bill. I think that we on the committee, I'll speak for myself, have varying opinions on what the level of asset preservation should be and, you know, we're gauging the interest of legislators to really determine what that looks like because some of the feedback we initially received from the bonding committees when they were here was not to spend a lot of money on mothballing, then to turn around and tear it down, down the road. So we'll take that into consideration and, you know, if the council is comfortable with it, I would like the Legislative Committee to have the ability tonight to move this forward and set those final parameters here in the coming days as we work with our local legislators to determine the best path. But we wanted to get something back before you guys tonight, giving you the, really the premise under which we're working to try to get this compromise and get things done.
All right.
Are you looking for a resolution or anything?
If we could get one, I think that'd be helpful to...
I'll make that resolution that the Legislative Committee continues to work with the legislators on their proposed plan.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second you.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is the open forum and first I will call on Ziola Holm. Come on up.
Okay, I'm short.
All right. Pull that microphone down so we can all hear you.
All right. So what I have heard...
Ziola, let me stop you there. Maybe just let everyone know what your name is and where you live.
Okay. I'm Ziola Holm. I live here in Fergus Falls. I am 15 years old and this is the first time I'm ever doing this, so I have absolutely no idea what I'm doing.
You're doing great so far.
Well, that's good. Okay. So all of the news about the RTC that I have heard about is that everybody wants to demolish it pretty much and I don't think we should do that. I think that the RTC should be preserved and like Rachel said, that's a lot of money to mothball those parts of the building. Well, I think it would be worth it because if we preserve that much of the building, that would bring in tourists if you open up the building or you could like establish the building to other parts, like you could turn it into a school or something if you wanted or there's just so many options that you could do with this and I don't really think you should worry about the money. That's what I got to say. Because I had this whole speech like drawn up in my head because I thought you were going to demolish like the whole thing and apparently I was wrong. So, yeah. So I'm glad that you guys are in favor of preserving most of the building. Hopefully you can come up with a feasible plan to preserve this almost. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
I know Ziola has to get to a speech meet tonight that starts at 7, but I think she's off to a pretty good start tonight so far. Thank you. The second open forum request that we have this evening is from Scott Quan and... Go ahead, Scott.
Come here.
If you...
Shoot.
If, Your Honor, if it's the same photographs as we've seen, then I would say no. I have no interest in time.
I have a couple of quick things I want to address too.
Sure, I'll say this, there is a open forum policy that an individual can address the council two times in a 12-month period concerning the same stuff. Now, I am going to allow you to speak tonight, I'm recognizing you, just for the sake, I think, keep it brief because we've heard some of the things that I believe you're bringing forward, at least from your open forum requests, so out of respect to the council, I think, I'm going to ask you to just keep it brief respectfully.
I appreciate that, Ben, and when I submitted the request, I wasn't assuming that I was going to be accepted because I know that policy of the once and twice in two months or whatever it is. So I appreciate that and thank you. And will it be possible to use the pictures? It's just five slides.
Pictures we've already seen, then?
They're not all pictures you've already seen. A couple of maps just for reference and then a couple of other things.
Is it pertaining to your...
Yeah, go ahead, Scott. No, that's the council's decision, so you guys go ahead.
Is it pertaining to your building, number 29? Is that what it is?
Well, that'll be part of it.
But that's, okay, so we already have somebody else listed besides you and you need... Well, the last time you came and talked to us, you were referenced to talk to Andrew about your plan and your... And then you come back to the council now, so what are you going to talk about now? We already told you what you need to do.
I'd be happy to tell you and I'm asking now if I can use the pictures or not.
I don't think you need the pictures to explain to us what you're going to do. I mean, I just, like I say, you're not in the ballpark or not in the game for 29 right now anyway. Somebody else is, so... But I'm just one guy. If they honestly want to see the pictures, that's fine, but...
I think, you know what, I think, let's take a vote on whether or not we're going to allow the pictures.
How many pictures are we talking about?
There's five slides and it just kind of goes along with what I'm saying.
Let's boot them up.
I think we can see five pictures.
Yep, here we go.
All right. Lynn?
I come before you tonight actually wearing two hats. The last time I was here, as Scott mentioned, I was talking about building 29 and I came in October last fall and then also came in February earlier this year, speaking about 29 on my own behalf in both of those cases. Since I, since last fall, I've joined essentially, joined the Friends of the Kirkbride and so I come wearing a hat in that regard tonight as well. I was involved with the rally that Justin mentioned earlier and I've gotten involved with that group in a more official and more active way. But first of all, as far as the first picture here, I once worked in Petaluma, California. That's just a small bedroom community just north of San Francisco and one of the fellows that I worked with, his name was Ross, he grew up there. This is just half an hour north of San Francisco. And I wanted to go down to San Francisco, having not been there much, and see the sights and I asked him about it. I said, "What should I go do? What should I go see? You grew up here." He didn't know anything about any of it. He said he never went there. He'd never ridden a cable car. He'd never walked on the Golden Gate Bridge. He'd never had clam chowder at Fisherman's Wharf. And here he was, 45 minutes away from some of the world's most recognizable landmarks, but he didn't care. To him, the Golden Gate Bridge was just another bridge, nothing special, cable cars, nothing special. Back in the 1940s, the mayor of San Francisco tried to get rid of the cable cars in San Francisco.
You get to the point, you have two minutes, so I mean, I don't think we need the preamble of San Francisco. We're not half a mile from a major metropolis, so I think you need to get to the point about building 29 or the withdrawal or the demo.
The mayor of San Francisco tried to get rid of the cable cars in the 1940s because he felt that they weren't efficient and that there were more cost-effective ways to move people around with buses. The business owners of that time realized that tourists did not come to San Francisco to ride buses. They formed a committee and saved the cable cars and the RTC is our cable car. So to answer your point, what I'm saying is you need to be patient. This is something that takes some time and the RTC is a tremendous asset to Fergus Falls. I appreciate the presentation that was just made earlier about what you're hoping to do and so then putting on my hat with the Friends of the Kirkbride, I'd have to say that we're optimistic in a very cautious way. The language that was used in the first ask, the present ask that is still in effect as far as I know, as you say, allowed for what money to be used for... as far as I know, as you say, allowed for what money to be used for things other than demolition, but it was pretty gray, pretty clouded, and none of the conversation that this group has had over the last six months has led any one of us to believe that there was really any interest in saving anything. It's all about how much can we demolish it, and how soon can we get that done. So, I'm going to, I'll leave it back. So, one of my wise friends once told me, "If you don't want to do something, any excuse will do." And in my opinion, that's the main reason that this process has been held up the way it has. It's been apparent that the city, or the city council, didn't want this to happen, or they could have made a deal. And they still could make a deal. And the evidence is in the first presentation that I made about building twenty-nine. My simple, relatively low-cost idea was basically brushed aside as just an idea. And yet, there was no effort made to even contact me after I made that presentation to offer a tour, to talk about what land might be involved around it, to put together any kind of platting request, to look at any kind of funding options, for what it worked, for what it's worth, and the timing of it, the architect I was planning to work with wasn't available until February, so I was waiting until February to be able to get those plans put together, while then in January, along comes the request for eight-point-nine million, and my whole plan looked like it went right down the toilet. The city of Fergus Falls is a steward of a great resource, and so, we're here to ask you to withdraw the money for demolition, and now as you're putting together this new ask, it would be terrific if the word demolition wasn't in there. There was more I could say about it, but in light of what you've presented tonight, I'll leave it at that. Justin did mention the picture of the horseshoe. It's our understanding from the Friends of the Kirkbride, as I understand it, as far, in order to maintain the eligibility for tax credits, that horseshoe needs to remain intact. And I'll agree that there's still some learning, some understanding to come to as far as the inner part and what may or may not be considered historical. But as of now, as you say, that's all considered historical. And so there may or may not be some, some give there, and I can't speak for the Friends of the Kirkbride as to what we may or may not do to either go along with and support your current idea or not, because this is the first we've seen of it tonight. I'll end with this, little cartoon from Baby Blues, the boy is putting together a model. Says, "Let's put this together." Whoa, hemmy, he says, "Whoa, first we lay out all the pieces, then we sand, then we paint, then we glue," and he says, "That'll take forever." Well, Rome wasn't built in a day. Well, it's probably because you were helping, Dad. Remember, Rome wasn't built in a day. Be patient, this'll take some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, we'll move on. There are no reports from staff and administrative officers, there's no old business or unfinished business that I'm aware of. Under new business, we have an item to discuss, street and infrastructure improvements, and I believe Brian Uvaro, are you going to...
I'll speak to it first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew, Andrew Brumstead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. About a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, I got a request from Councilmember Speedall and Councilmember Appert to have this on an upcoming agenda, wanting to talk about, with the engineering department and the city engineer, what things would look like if we were to increase infrastructure funding and upgrade spending by twenty percent over the next few years, with recommendations on both the short-term and long-term cost benefits provided. I don't know if either of those councilmembers want to speak more to that, or if the council has a direction for the city staff, more specifically the city engineer leaving here this evening to explore that.
Well, I would just mention, thank you, your honor...
Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
...that in the, in the, sometimes the tyranny of the urgent, or the things that keep coming up that we must do, and we get different requests from different groups, but we often overlook the infrastructure of the city, the aging infrastructure, and not just the streets, but what's under the streets is the crucial part, as we've been learning. And I know that in conversation with Mr. Uvaro, this is, again, a request to research and look at options that, and I'll let Councilmember Appert speak to whatever part he sees, but we hear from constituents that, don't forget our infrastructure amidst all these other things, so we want to make sure that we take a look at that.
Yeah, our biggest asset, so, Mr. Uvaro has, has talked about looking into it, he's got a program that he can work with to develop some numbers, and that's, that's what we're going to be looking at here in the near future, so, thank you, Brian.
Yes, Anthony?
I think, that's kind of one of the things that I think we need to look at, kind of, I know we, we tried to kind of find a date where we had a, could have a specific meeting about funding of all these projects, but I think this highlights, you know, the need for that meeting, and whether we do that in a work session, but, you know, I think, a couple of council meetings ago, I spoke about kind of that we need to look for a twenty-five to thirty million dollar pool of money, you know, and I think we need to develop that plan so that we can, you know, get it on the books to go to the state legislator in two years' time to get, you know, some of that, that money from, from the state, you know, at least fifty percent, and then look at how we raise, you know, the money locally for the other fifty percent, you know, whether half of that is from donations and grants, and the other half perhaps on sales tax. But, I think, you know, we have the Aquatics Center, we've got trails, you know, we've got the dairy property, we've got art, you know, we've got infrastructure, we've got Lake Alice. There's, there's all those projects that need funding, and I think, you know, this, this would be good research to go into that, so when we have that meeting, we know what we're talking about.
Thanks, Anthony. Jim?
I do know that last year on the levy committee, we kind of looked at maybe some type of a bond, bonding to-do streets over like four or five years, streets and what's below them, and I think that we need to, to get back to that and, and discuss that again.
Do you want me to talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Bill.
We got two takers.
What's that?
We got two takers.
We did talk about that some, and that's one of the things us as staff are continually working on, and I know engineering is working on a five-year capital improvement plan for streets, and that is, it's very specific when it is for streets. We work on a capital improvement plan every year, but as an example, if you remember when we did some improvements to City Hall, or how we built the police department, that was through capital improvement plan bonding. So you lay out your plan for the next five years, you bring that before the city council and have a hearing on that. Brian's putting together a five-year street reconstruction plan, that's what we're working with, SRF, right? And we need that to do that type of bonding that you brought up. You lay out that five-year plan for bonding, we'll bring that before you as a city council have a hearing on that, kind of lays out, here's what's going to happen when, and then it allows you to use that tool of bonding to support those kind of street projects. So that's one example of that, but that's in the, in the process, in the works, we have been working on, on that.
Brian?
Yes, thank you, and I'll just review quickly what, and enhance what Bill was talking about. Back in November, if you recall, the city council accepted a professional services agreement from SRF to develop a five-year capital improvement plan. That's currently underway, we anticipate a deliverable here, coming up here in the spring months here. It's a, it's a review of our icon pavement management system, that has taken a little bit of time, but I think we're making progress. But in essence, in addition to a five-year capital improvement plan, and it was just more so that we're concentrating on street resurfacing and everything. But a component and deliverable that I'm looking to enhance further is update the city's street maintenance policy. This also, in consideration, conjunction, and further implementation of our pavement management system, is to identify the most efficient street preservation strategy. Like I've always said, a mill and overlay has certain, certain limitations to what we're doing. And, and basically, and essentially, the main emphasis that we're trying to achieve with our largest asset the city has, is to index and see what our current funding levels are and forecast them, and compare them to our current PCI, Pavement Conditional Index, which is an assigned number based on ASHDO standards. We've been maintaining this since two thousand and six, but this, this in essence will give us a snapshot in time to see what our funding levels are in comparison to the natural decay curves, which pavements generally have. So essentially, and we'll go into this much more detail perhaps at a committee section, but it's going to give us that shot, where are we? Are we, are we below satisfactory or above the threshold limits for pavement, pavement decay? And the sixth, sixth objective that we're currently looking at is to, what Mr., to answer Mr. Hicks to, is identify any potential alternative funding sources, such as franchise fees, that we see a lot of other communities or some grasping, and also look at street improvement districts, that we have to look at legislation to see how that's arrived and everything as well, in addition to our current funding, either through our enterprise funds or our assessments that we're currently working on. So, yes, I anticipate a lot of work coming moving forward, but what the council already approved is, is still in works, and we're, we're making progress with that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All right, is there any other business or announcements to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned. Bless you.